Again, everybody, on this horrible, horrible night. I admire that you come out so often and I hope the rain doesn't rain and the snow doesn't over for evermore because it's miserable, isn't it? Anyway, I get down to my question, sorry about that. Right, it is. What alternative locations for the Memorial Hall site did those responsible for progressing the East Street Brightwell scheme look at when informed by the Brightwells trustees that they will be unable to operate inadequately, or sorry, adequately, from the new Gostrey Centre proposed as a community benefit within the development, following the allocation of additional facilities to Eminus Food as a new tenant for Chris Nicholson's town centre site? Thank you.
Thank you very much and thank you for your kind words in opening. Thank you. I'll ask the portfolio holder to reply.
Thank you very much, Leader. Good evening, thank you, good evening, Mrs Sandars. Thank you for your question. Before I answer your question, I need to correct you, I'm afraid, on two points. Firstly, it was the trustees who asked for an alternative location away from Brightwells. The request didn't come from the council itself. Secondly, the space that was intended for the new Brightwells Gostrey Centre at Brightwells has not been allocated to Marks and Spencer Simply Food. Haven't put that right. Now, turn to your question. Council officers considered sites to meet the needs of the Brightwells Gostrey Centre, both now and in the future, including the Maltings and Cobb Gates. However, the Memorial Hall was the favoured option as it met the needs of both the Brightwells Gostrey Centre and the users of the Memorial Hall, as well as the wider community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item five, the executive forward programme, set out on pages thirteen to eighteen. Are there any amendments, please? councillor O'Neill.
Thank you, Leader. Let me refer you to page sixteen, item three there under Environment, in relation to the Weyden Lane Sig. We are, the objective is in fact to start that not in late March, as shown here, but indeed to kick it off somewhere in late March, early April. We're going back to discuss with the ONS on the twenty-fourth of March. Thereafter, we'll kick it off and we anticipate completion within six months of start. Thank you.
Thank you. Probably the earliest anticipated date than six months, it should be removed. Thank you. It'll be put back in when it's closer to an anticipated date. Any others, please? Those agreed? Okay. Six is the Waverley Financial Strategy, two thousand fifteen, sixteen, two thousand eighteen, nineteen. You'll see that it's dealt with in differing parts, A, B, C and D, and recommendations. So we'll deal with each part and then move on. Thank you.
Leader, thank you. As you said, we've got four parts to the financial strategy, two parts concerning the general fund and two parts concerning the HRA. I'll cover all four, but the last two, which also concern the HRA, the portfolio holder may wish to come in and comment as well on those. So, starting with item six A, general fund budget, and the report starts on page nineteen of your agenda, members, and item six A, the general fund revenue budget. The real key headlines here for us are that, in spite of a twenty-nine per cent cut in our revenue support grant this year from central government, we can still, through very careful and prudent financial planning, we can still plan and will deliver a balanced budget. The proposal includes a freeze on our council tax. We intend, and the proposal before you tonight, is that we accept the council tax freeze grant and this means therefore that our council tax charge will have stayed the same for the last six years. There are no plans to increase parking charges. The project very clearly protects all our frontline services and we maintain the overall level of support for community organisations at seven hundred and fifty thousand pounds for the third year running. The budget includes thirty thousand pounds to maintain the Waverley-owned ditches to help with flood resilience. It reinstates the running costs of keeping the broadwater toilets open and includes an amount to strengthen our customer service team responding to inquiries about waste and recycling. Leader, both the corporate and the community ONS committees have spent time looking in great detail at the budget proposals and the proposals for the forthcoming year and I would like to take this opportunity, as I know other portfolio holders would, to thank them for all their comments and feedback, which has been very, very much welcomed, and thank them for their commitment as well to this. And I commend the recommendations to members. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, before I ask for any comments on this, six A, I'd like to draw your attention to page sixty-three, which is cemetery charges at Sunvale Cemetery, Hazelmead, which is the only cemetery we run as a council. And you'll see some of the fees there, the increases are quite large. An earth grave from one hundred and sixty-six pounds to a thousand. Whilst this is moving in the right direction, probably the leadership feels this is an excessive increase at one time. But to put it in perspective, if we look at the other authorities, for instance, Farnham Town Council that do the same, charge one thousand five hundred and fifty and Guildford Borough Council charge one thousand five hundred and ninety and we've been at a hundred and sixty-six, so there is some large gap there. However, members, I think you have a paper, I'm assuming you have a paper, of a proposed change to some of these charges and you will see that on that charge, instead of it being a thousand, we are suggesting five hundred. On the next one, instead of being five hundred, we're suggesting two hundred. And then with Memorial Works also, we are reducing the figures from a hundred and fifty to seventy. Some of the costs also on three, four and five are also being reduced from three hundred to two hundred, we propose. I think the deputy leader will second that amendment.
Yes, Leader, happy to second the amendment.
Thank you. Any other items, please? councillor Reynolds.
Well, thank you, Leader. Well, I think I just wanted to say what a great news story it is that for the sixth successive year, we've been able to freeze council tax for our residents. I think that's the most important thing I think council can do, apart from the statutory duties of cleaning, taking garbage and stuff like that, is to run a balanced and good budget and we've been able to do that over at least the last six years, in fact, the last eight years, but having six years with no council tax increase despite many millions of grant reductions in our budget from central government, I think is testimony to how well we've done. Thank you.
Thank you. That is absolutely right. I think we can be proud that we've kept the council tax frozen for all this time. It's rather like the evening outside, isn't it, frozen? And also maintained all our frontline services. So we can be very pleased with that. Any other speakers? So on this, six A, there are eight recommendations. The recommendation, that's four, to approve charges and fees shown in Annex six, there is now that amendment which we have moved. Is that amendment agreed?
Agreed.
So therefore, that's approved, the charges and fees as shown at Annex six, as amended. With that change, are those eight recommendations agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Six B.
Leader, thank you. The report that you have before you, members, starting on page seventy-nine, covers the general fund capital programme for the forthcoming year. And this sets out the revenue projects and capital scheme proposals for twenty fifteen and sixteen and beyond. Now, the capital programme proposes a mixture of investment in existing assets and services and utilises the new homes bonus to provide new and improved facilities. Again, key headlines being budget approval for a new community centre at the Memorial Hall site, commitment to work up a scheme to hopefully develop the Frenchham Common Visitor Educational Centre and plans for additional PV panel installations on Waverley-owned buildings. There are a number of other projects, but again, just some of the key headlines for you this evening and there are a number of recommendations for that on page five, which I recommend to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, any comment questions on that? Some very detailed papers here, of course. Five recommendations, are they agreed?
Agreed.
Six C is the HRA annual business plan. councillor Potts.
Leader, thank you. Again, I'll top line the two HRA parts to the budget and councillor King, as one of the portfolio holders, may wish to come in, but I'll just top line that first. So, item six C, which starts, members, on page ninety-one, and this report covers the thirty-year business plan and revenue budgets for the housing revenue account. Now, we've been able to take a longer term view with the housing revenue account because of the certainty of rent income going forward and the need to ensure that we can manage the long-term debt. It's also important that we have a very robust business plan so that we adequately invest in our existing homes for our tenants and are able to provide new homes for future generations. Members, there are details set out in Annex one on page ninety-seven of the housing revenue account and that gives details of the business plan assumptions. We've maintained the principles and which are set following last year's agreement by council in terms of government policy regarding the rent increases for our tenants and it's really important, I think, there that we remember that as well as doing that, all rental income is invested in our homes or in building new homes, which of course ultimately benefit our residents and our tenants. The detailed budget sheets for the HRA are included in Annexes three on page one hundred and one and show the proposed growth in the budgets. And it's also proposed that we instigate two new posts to strengthen the housing establishment area in terms of the key frontline service that they offer to our residents in terms of repairs and voids. I hope that that clarifies that for you and I don't know if the portfolio holder would like to come in at all? No? Okay, thank you councillor King.
councillor Martin.
I would just like to say how fantastic a situation we're actually in compared to that that we were in a few years ago when we were facing the pernicious negative housing subsidy and the uncertainty that came from it and the fact that actually what we thought at the time was not a particularly good deal for us, actually we've managed to turn it around into something really rather good and we've transformed our housing department into sort of a department, I think the portfolio holder would accept on the back foot, to a housing department that's very much on the front foot and developing more social housing for those residents in our borough that are most needing of it. So I think, you know, it's good news actually that a couple of years down the road from the end of the negative housing subsidy, that we are in this position and that we're moving forward, moving forward very successfully. So my congratulations to the housing team.
Thank you very much. I think that's very true. It was a lot of hard work at the time and we had to pay over that huge amount of money to the government, but the officers were very careful in making sure that we set up the right scheme and that has been beneficial for our members. And we mustn't forget that it was this council and my predecessor, but this Conservative administration, that battled for a change in that negative equity position that we were in when government used to take more than half of our income from our council housing. Any others, please? No? So on this, six C, there are eight recommendations. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
We go now for six D, housing revenue account capital programme.
Leader, thank you. I'll ask members to turn to the report, which they'll find on page one hundred and seventeen, and that's the housing revenue account capital programme. The report sets out the draft capital programme for the housing revenue account and is split over the three main elements. So we have the core capital programme, which includes investment in the current houses, including decent homeworks, and two other programmes which cover new affordable homes building and the reconfiguration of existing stock. The estimated spend in fifteen, sixteen is some twenty million pounds, so I think that really shows the council's commitment to its tenants and to this programme. There are a number of exempt annexes, colleagues, which I don't intend to go into in detail. They are there and I'm sure you've read the papers, but they do include and detail very specifically planned works such as improvements to windows, kitchens and bathrooms, et cetera, for our tenants. So again, Leader, I think you'll agree, a very robust and a very exciting programme for the HRA and again, I commend the four recommendations to colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. councillor Reynolds.
Just carrying on really from councillor Martin's comments earlier, I think this is great because by my reckoning, I think we will be building something like seventy-plus new homes over the next few years for our least privileged residents and I think that's absolutely amazing. I mean, it's not as many as we'd like to build because we've got an enormous need, but given the constraints, I think, you know, seventy new houses is certainly better than zero new houses and I think it's testimony to the team here that they've got out and done some very good work in finding sites that could be developed, which are council-owned sites and obviously not sites where we're having to wrestle with developers to try and buy it for the best price because obviously we need to have a very tight finger on the finances. But I think that's a very good news story. Obviously allied to that is all the work we've done on existing council houses in renewing electrics, roofs, kitchens, bathrooms, double glazing and everything like that and, you know, I think it has transformed over the last four or five years and I think our residents would be, and I hope they are, very happy.
Thank you. councillor King.
Thank you very much indeed, Leader. You know, I'm really delighted with the way things are going and I'm very pleased that we're going to be able to continue having caught up with all the decent homes backlog that we now can invest in the rolling programme so that our homes for our tenants will remain as decent properties. One of the big successes of this year, which I'm sure, Leader, you will join me in congratulating staff on, was the refurbishment of Rolston House, one of our sheltered units. Our older, more vulnerable residents are greatly benefiting from the amount of work and the investment in that property. We visited it together, I know, recently and I have to say, I'm really impressed. So we're now really gradually bringing our stock up to fit for the future, actually, is what is my expression, not just fit for now, it's going to be fit for the future and for the benefit of all our residents, the tenants at Waverley. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. You're absolutely right. I went along with you to the formal opening, reopening of Rolston House and I was very impressed by the work that's been done on our behalf and having known people that lived there before, it is so much more comfortable and something that we can be very pleased with indeed. I'm also pleased to see that the twenty-seven pages of lists, many, many houses or residences on every list of the amount of upgrades that are being proposed in your exempt papers that are coming, coming period, coming year. Any others, please? No? In that case, six D, there are four recommendations. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Seven is the Budget Management Report, which is set out on page one five five to one seven eight.
Thank you very much, Leader. Well, this report sets out the latest projected position against the current year's budget and again, some key headlines from this for you, members. The general fund is showing a projected net underspend of just over six hundred thousand pounds, which is mainly due to improved income position against budget. There's a request to use a hundred, fifteen thousand pounds of the revenue underspend to undertake a three-month free parking pilot in selected car parks within the borough and the general fund capital programme looks to be largely on track at this stage with some minor savings being reported. The housing revenue account looks likely to come in under budget this year and that's mainly due to a number of items that have had to be rescheduled in terms of the capital works. However, we are keeping a very close eye on that, so we are aware of that. There is also a request included in the report to approve environment to aligned budgets to meet spending patterns where kitchen and bathroom work undertaken by the contractor has a number of elements, including asbestos and structural work required. So, Leader, there are a number of recommendations under this report and again, I would commend this to members. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any comments? Four recommendations, item number seven, are they agreed?
Agreed.
Item eight is the funding for the voluntary sector organisations, twenty fifteen, sixteen. Mrs Ellis, I think you'd like to speak for four minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. I suppose I'm not really going to say anything that isn't in the report, but I would like to address the issue of funding, in particular to Roly's and its umbrella organisation, AIDUK Waverley. This council has always very strongly supported the voluntary organisations, especially for the elderly and the vulnerable and although I'm no longer directly involved, I was associated with the two organisations as a Waverley observer for many years. Both of the organisations currently operate from premises within my ward and provide a service to the community. If I could address Roly's first, I would like to express my gratitude for the strong support from the officers and from this administration throughout a very difficult time for Roly's, during which building work was being carried out around the premises and many residents and users thought that the centre was closed. Now that the building work is complete, I'm pleased to say that the numbers of people visiting the centre is very encouraging and it is a thriving and vibrant place to be. The lovely team of staff and volunteers have brilliant ideas for the centre and the proposed increase to their funding, which I hope will be agreed, is really indicative of the support for the centre from this council and will be much appreciated and a wonderful encouragement to everyone involved. I freely admit I have always found the accounting procedures of AIDUK Waverley difficult to understand and it was decided last year to ring-fence the funding for Roly's. I would like to strongly support the suggestion made by one of my colleagues at the ONS committee meeting that the grants should be placed in restricted funds, which will hopefully ensure that we can all more easily understand how it is managed. With the constant significant reduction in funding available to this council from government, we have to be thoughtful about every penny spent and sometimes that means making difficult decisions. The information and advice service provided by AIDUK Waverley is very good locally in Cranley, but it has never been possible for the organisation to provide a service borough-wide for which it has been funded by Waverley. It's not just a matter of taking a telephone call and sending out the appropriate leaflets, but in many cases there is the need for the information and advice officer to make home visits, to assist with the completion of appropriate application forms, which can take a very long time and our centres for the community and other organisations also need support and relevant information which they appear not to be receiving. We are all very aware of the difficulties of providing a service across such a large geographical areas as is Waverley and I'm afraid that in view of the ever-increasing demands on our grant funding, the total of which we have not reduced even during these times of austerity, I would support the disappointing step of ceasing to fund this part of the grant. I am reassured that citizens of Vice and AIDUK Surrey will be enhancing their existing services within the borough and both are in a position to ensure that the elderly and the vulnerable will not suffer in any way from the change in service provision and indeed, I believe, a very many more of our residents boroughwide will be able to benefit from the service. Due to incorrect information and rumours that are circulating at the moment, could I please very briefly take this opportunity, express my very strong support for the excellent gardening service which is provided by AIDUK Waverley and partly funded by a joint partnership of Waverley Borough Council and Surrey County Council and the extremely helpful handyman service, again, provided by AIDUK Waverley and funded on an annual basis by Surrey County Council. I sincerely hope that these two services, which help our elderly residents to live safely and comfortably in their own homes, will continue to be provided and supported. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you very much, councillor Ellis. councillor Reynolds.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Pat Ellis for your comments and your support. I'm delighted that we've been able to maintain our grants budget for a further year in spite of the twenty-nine per cent reduction in our own grant from government. As a proportion of the council's overall net budget, the level of financial support has increased and this shows our commitment to the community organisations that do such good work for our residents. We have in fact this year committed more money to services for older people in the borough and all day centres will be receiving increased funding. Farncombe Day Centre, the Clock House and Orchard Club will all see an eight per cent increase, while Brightwells Gostrey Centre will receive a ten per cent increase and Rowley Centre for the Community in Cranley will receive a sixteen per cent increase. The three service level agreements which we started in two thousand and twelve have worked very well for all parties and we will be continuing with these for further three years and within that, both citizens of Vice, Waverley and Waverley Hopper Community Transport will be receiving an increased grant of eight per cent. In twenty fifteen to eighteen, we will be drawing up four new service level agreements for Cranley Arts Centre, the Clock House, Farncombe Day Centre and the Orchard Club and they are all very happy that they will be on SLAs with us going forward. Now, I will turn on to AIDUK Waverley. As previously mentioned, we have increased our grant to them by sixteen per cent for their work to deliver the Roly's service, which offers Roly's more funding than they actually requested. This funding must be ring-fenced for Roly's and we would expect to see it appear in their restricted reserves, as councillor Ellis mentioned, and there is a recommendation to cover this. However, we can no longer support AIDUK Waverley's information advice service and there are a number of reasons for this, but I will cover just a couple tonight. The service they provide can be provided for no additional cost to Waverley taxpayers by AIDUK Surrey, which is currently providing this service in all other Surrey boroughs and is funded by the Surrey County Council portion of our residents' council tax. Citizens of Vice Waverley also provide an additional, sorry, an advice service which Waverley and other councils fund and in addition, CAB Waverley can provide financial debt advice to older residents, which is a service that AIDUK Waverley Advice Service cannot offer. The second important point is that the information advice service that AIDUK Waverley provides is supposed to be boroughwide, but despite our previously noticed concerns about this and using their own figures, it appears that forty-three per cent of the advice provided for Cranley residents, even though they make up only twenty per cent of the borough's elderly population, eighty per cent of the over sixty-fives live in Farnham, Godleming and Hazelmead, but less than half the advice service... service is provided in these areas. Age UK Surrey and CAB Surrey are in a position to provide a borough-wide service for older people. As previous years, we have kept some funding back for any emergency requirements. Assuming we have no further requests this financial year, we will have just over £40,000 available for community organisation, plus an additional £19,420, which will be ring-fenced for all those organisations on an SLA should they have any extra need. I'd like to thank Community ONS for their work on this. They went, they had a mini-panel that went through our recommendations, which they then took to the ONS meeting last week. They have, I've been happy with all our recommendations except there were two comments they made. One was to the Rural Life Centre, they were seeking a reduction in the grant from 2,000 to 1,000. But my preferred option is to keep it at 2,000, which in itself is a reduction from the previous year. But what we will be doing is stating to them that they can expect further reductions in future years. I think it's fairer to spread the reduction over a couple of years rather than do it in one fell swoop. The other organisation is a place to be. We recommended a grant of 500 and the ONS suggested it should be 1,000. We have tried to engage with them in the past and they haven't worked very closely with us. So what I'm proposing this year, though, is to award the £500 that we recommend, but suggest that a further £500 will be made available to them on condition that they work with the council to provide a long-term sustainable model. And I hope that that will be agreed by all members. I think that's really all I have to say, so we have seven recommendations. I'd be very grateful if you could all endorse them because I certainly do. Thank you.
Commissioner Mrs King.
Thank you very much indeed, Leader. I'd like to thank Commissioner Reynolds very much indeed for his excellent work on the grants panel this year. I sat on the panel as well. I have to say, it's probably been the hardest year ever. The number of applications for grants have increased considerably and it meant we had to be very strict on working out the allocations. It had to show that we were meeting the needs of our residents and providing really good value for money for Waverley. I'd just like to point out that the, just in case, because it seems quite a big increase to give the existing SLAs an 8% increase, but it in fact is an increase that covers three years. They haven't had an increase for three years and they won't get another one for another three years. So just wanted to cover that off. The focus this year, much to my great pleasure, has been very much on providing services for older people as portfolio holder for older people. I thank them very much for that. It will be greatly appreciated. The day centres are doing really excellent work now. They're focused on delivering the right things to get the right outcomes for our older population. Thank you very much indeed. I shall support this.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Sorry, I just want to come back because it's most remiss of me not to also thank Jane Todd, Katie Webb and the team for all the hard work we've done. I'm terribly sorry, I can't even read my own writing, but they've provided tremendous support to us. In fact, you see the paperwork we get when we have to wade through all these grant applications, it's actually in its own enormous folder, which we have to lug around with us. But no, thank you very much, particularly Jane, because she's done the brunt of the work, so it's much appreciated.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Well, on all these items, six, seven and eight, which are all financially connected, I'd just like to thank the portfolio holders and the officers for their hard work in getting us to this stage where we're able to have a balanced budget and continue to support many organisations. On this item, number eight, there are seven recommendations. Are they agreed? Item number nine is the Treasury Management Framework.
Leader, thank you. Item nine, which is on page 199 onwards to page 224, Treasury Management Framework. This is an extremely important annual policy review which this council has to carry out. And we're seeking approval for the framework within which we manage our treasury functions. And this includes investments, borrowing and banking. So again, a very, very important review. It's detailed as we have some £190 million of borrowing and £60 million of investments currently. So we're dealing with some very large sums of money here. And officers have reviewed the framework and the policies within it and have confirmed that it still complies with best practice and meets the statutory requirements. It continues to provide the necessary safeguards, but also a flexibility for the finance team to make their day-to-day treasury transactions. There are therefore no changes proposed this year from the current report and I commend the recommendation. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you. Any comments? One recommendation, is that agreed? Item 10 is the Annual Pay Policy Statement 2015-16. The Localism Act of 2011 requires all public bodies to publish an annual pay policy statement. This council is required to adopt the annual pay policy statement each year and the council is not legally permitted to depart from the policy set out in that statement when it considers actual decisions in relation to individuals' remuneration, including redundancy and/or service. So this is a legal requirement. It is set out at agenda item 10. There's one recommendation, is it agreed? Thank you. Item 11 is the European Waste Directive. Commissioner O'Neill.
Yeah, thank you, Leader. As you can see here from the report that is submitted, we are talking here about the evaluation of the implications of a European Waste Directive. We're talking here about breaking new ground, there's no precedent for this, so therefore made it appropriate to work with other boroughs in Surrey on coming up with an evaluation of this. A very extensive evaluation based upon mathematical modelling and upon interpretation of data already available has been made and the detailed report you can see on page 335. The recommendations, I believe, are very pragmatic, the three are given there and I heartily recommend them. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you, colleagues. Any comment? Three recommendations, are they agreed? Two obvious revision of the Joint Municipal Waste Management Strategy. Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Leader. This item represents compliance with the Waste Emissions Trading Act, which requires regular review of the waste management strategies. In Waverley's case, this strategy was developed with the other Surrey councils through the Surrey Waste Partnership. The initial strategy was put in place in 2006 and this is the second revision. It reflects experience since the last revision in 2010 and especially that of widespread employment of commingled waste collection in Waverley and elsewhere during that time. And it also reflects feedback from residents and other key stakeholders. The revised strategy takes account of increasing population, changing legislation and budget pressures, but the most important area of focus is that after initially high gains, progress on increasing recycling rates is now largely levelled out. Differences in performance between individual Surrey boroughs do however indicate that there is a gap between the best and the poorer performers, which can be filled by targeting a number of activity areas. The work plan, which you will find in tabular form on pages 254 to 262, is divided into 12 specific areas and I don't intend to deal with them separately. But I would say that what is probably the most important single concern is addressed in work area two and relates to communication. We are conscious that though the majority of residents are committed to recycling, some uncertainty still exists and must be eliminated as regards what can and cannot be recycled, especially as regards plastics. Addressing this involves improvement of what I might term the preaching to the converted. And a more intractable problem is however preaching to the unconverted, to those who are cynical and uncommitted in relation to recycling. So special attention will be paid within the communications strategy to targeting such groups. The strategy revision is, I believe, a very pragmatic one. It builds on prior experience and it targets the areas where improvement is required. I have no hesitation in commending it to the executive. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much. Any comments, colleagues? One recommendation, is that agreed? We now have 13 electronic or electric vehicle rapid charging points within three Waverley car parks. Commissioner Martin.
Thank you, Leader. I think this is another good news story for this council. Following the increased availability and increased use of electric vehicles, there is some need for public charging points in much the same way that there's thousands, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of petrol stations around the country. There are some, but more are needed. And I think this is a case that we see so often in planning where the infrastructure seems to follow the demand rather than providing for it in the future. So I think what we're seeking here to do is to provide some infrastructure to encourage more use of electric vehicles and all the benefits that go with them. It's an opportunity that this council has because the funding for these three electric vehicle points is from elsewhere, it's a countywide scheme. And actually, the cost to this council is fairly small and I think it's worth it for the benefits and the sustainability credentials that that gives us. So I would fully endorse the recommendations here.
Thank you very much. I was glad you mentioned the petrol station because the picture of this device on page 281 looks like a petrol pump from 1950s or something, so perhaps that's what it's meant to be. Any other comments, colleagues? Two recommendations, are they agreed? Item 14 is the conversion of part of Roland House Cranly. As the portfolio holders on holiday, I'll ask the officer to speak.
Thank you, Leader. Just to say that part of Roland House is now vacant following the surrender of the lease by the former tenant and we've considered alternative uses for this space. It has potential to convert to a four-bedroom, fully wheelchair accessible flat to meet an identified local housing need, subject to planning permission for change of use. Obviously, we'll be consulting with the ward councillors, neighbouring users and prospective tenants before proceeding to the planning stage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comment from colleagues? No, then there's one recommendation, is that agreed? Fifteen, there are the executive director's actions.
Thank you, Leader. Two actions this month under this category. The first allowed for prompt withdrawal of an enforcement notice and the second allowed for early placement of adverts for four new apprentices on more competitive terms than we've previously been offering. Thank you, Leader.
Thank you very much. Thank you. That's the note, colleagues, that noted. Thank you. Sixteen and seventeen are both on exempt papers and if we're going to talk about it at all, and I think we need to, we need to go into exempt. So I therefore propose that pursuant to procedure rule 20 and in accordance with section 100a brackets four of the Local Government Act 1972, the press and public be excluded from the meeting during the consideration of those items on the grounds set out on the papers. Is that agreed?